Resilient, you're fearless, and unstoppable. So congratulations, Young Bulls. You've made history, but most importantly, you have made Flint proud. Congratulations. All right, so now is the time for anyone from the coaching staff. If you would like to address the council at this time, you may be able to do so right now.
Dr. Lewis, Mayor Neely, and members of the Flint City Council. To Dr. Lewis, Mayor Neely, and members of the Flint City Council, on behalf of the entire 475 Young Bulls organization, we would like to express our sincere gratitude for recognizing and acknowledging acknowledging us from the city of, from the city council. Being honored by, being honored by our city for the 12-year championship. Victory is truly a moment our players, coaches, and families will never forget. This recognition is about more than just a championship. It represents the hard work, discipline, and resilience of our young, our young athletes, as well as the unwavering support from our community. Your acknowledgement reminds our players that their city stands behind, behind them and believes in their potential both on and off the field. We would also like to extend a special thank you to Mayor, Mayor Shetan Neely for his support and assistance with helping provide food for our, our team banquet. Judges like this show our youth that the leadership within the city cares deeply about their growth and success. With that being said, we're proud to share that several of our players have been selected to play on the 3C, 3C Sports All-Star Football Team, which will compete in an, in a UYFL National Championship in Florida from December 6th through the 14th. A group of our players and coaches and families will be traveling to represent both the city of Flint and the state of Michigan on a national stage. We're, we're incredibly proud of this opportunity and exposure it brings to our youth and our city. Please excuse our haste because some of the young men will have to leave early due to having to get to practice. In the meantime, we are, we are also seeking sponsorship and donations from our community to support and help offset the travel and lodging costs for our families, and especially the trip for the young men just getting to and from Florida. We are truly grateful to serve this community and represent the city of Flint with pride. Thank you again for believing in our mission and our, and for helping us continue to provide positive opportunities for our youth. Together, we're building something special for the next generation. We appreciate you and respect.
So, so before, so before you walk away, I want to allow an opportunity for my colleague that may want to address you to do so as well. And I heard you say that the mayor was able to, to contribute to your banquet?
Yes.
All right, but I also heard that you all, you, you all been footing your own bill.
Yes.
You know, and, and you are doing what we say need to be done. We're talking about adults stepping up, being that example, putting their money and their time where their mouth is, and you're doing that. And from this body, we have supported organizations that do that. And so I feel that as a body, because what we control, we control ordinances and budgets. I trust that we can find some support for you to continue to do your work.
Thank you. We definitely appreciate it.
Absolutely. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Priestley.
You know, you guys represent the future of the city and the future of athletics in the city. I was another athletic person. I was in the band, you know? The football team was on our practice field. That's, I've seen a lot of those things. But during the time when I was in high school, Northwestern dominated the city sports. And, and I see you guys doing that now. And congratulations, good luck, and don't give up because you will regret it. When you're 50 years from now, you'll say, "Man, if I had only stayed playing." So don't give up and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes Councilwoman in the sixth ward? You have the floor.
Thank you. Congratulations. I mean, you're a, you got a great, good-looking group of young, y'all want to be called young men or young boys? I'm a mom of, of two boys, and to see this, it means a lot. I'm glad that you're doing this and coaches to step up and giving your time and energy because you're role models. Your role models and these young men will look towards you for guidance forever and ever. Congratulations. Give yourself a pat on the back because they won because they had good coaches and good parents who make sure, because it all comes together when you're doing this in the travel leagues. I've done them. And it's a lot of work when you're driving, making sure the uniforms, making sure the kids are together and having food, and somebody might be sick or parenting time between different parents. It can be a lot. So congratulations. Please continue to do what you do. And when I walked in, I was just amazed. You know, I'm like, "That's a good-looking group of young men." But you four are a good-looking group of coaches too. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to acknowledge the team at this time? Councilwoman in the third ward.
Again, once again, congratulations to the young men that are sitting here today. Great job, job well done. Because y'all could be doing something else, but we're glad that you guys are playing the sport that you guys chose to play. Good luck for the next year championship as well, and thank you, coaches, for being great mentors.
All right, seeing as how everyone who wanted to speak had the opportunity to speak, I'll take a little bit of time. Coaches, congratulations. Thank you for your hard work and your commitment to our community, but not only our community, but to these young men for being good role models for them and preparing them. Young men, young men, young men, I'm super proud of y'all. Y'all come from a long tradition of one thing about Flint. We are champions. We breed champions. And while we might have a little fun high school jab rivalry here and there, one thing we can all come together and agree on is that Flint turns out leaders, and we turn out champions. We turn out professional athletes. And so I have no doubt that you all will go down that path. I look forward to continuing to cheer you on, not only as you continue to do this, but as you go to high school and play football, as you go to college and play football. Some of y'all probably already in high school, but as you go to college and play football, we are hoping you choose the right college. I won't say who, but we're just looking forward to cheering you on even as you go to the NFL. So congratulations ahead of time on the many victories ahead of you. And once again, coaches, thank you. All right, and I think that that now concludes this special order. Once again, congratulations, everyone. It is now time for public comments. Members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box was placed at the entrance to the council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speaks or slips were accepted after the meeting began. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. First public speaker, Madam Clerk.
First speaker is Ariel Mitchell.
Hello, City Council. I'm Ariel Mitchell. I live in Ward, Third Ward, 759 East Linden Avenue, over there by the graveyard, Grace Line. And for the record, how about those Lions last night? Yeah, the most powerful man in the whole world was sitting in the audience, Donald Trump, and I heard a whole lot of boos. But didn't hear no boos for these victorious football players in Flint. When they go to high, there's only one high school left in Flint, and that's mine, old southwestern down on 12th Street. And it makes me very proud to see these black quarterbacks in the, taking over the football league just like the Lions did and just like all the mayor of Detroit, Mayor Young. He don't have to be a puppet like the, the little man downstairs who being protected, can't call the shots over, because we trying to make history in Flint over the grocery store over on Clyo Road, just like Mayor Young. And we blitzed on, ain't nobody to be pushed around. And the police chief's gonna find that this out the night when they come up here. Dr. Green, I mean Chief Green and his, and his gang, that's what there is, a gang. Because the first time I came to a gang, it was over on St., over on State Street. The gang was Lumpy Duff Rover. I come straight from Georgia, and he come and recruit us in his backyard, but his big sister told his daddy on him. They said, "Daddy, Lumpy Duff has got them boys on the swing, hitting them in the stomach." And what, my brother, and what? Anyway, every man got to be his own leader. And, and all these, look at them. They, they know how to get their own money. They owe their money, and they, they gonna respond. For all the years we messed up in Flint and talk about Northwestern demonized, or that Mr. Priestley talked about, Southwestern was the baddest, Southwestern. And that's the school I went to. The first black quarterback, they didn't want no black quarterbacks. And we, first one, we, me and Ronnie Flatt, won the whole championship. And but, and stay tuned, America, I approve this message. And give me some feedback for, for the mayor downstairs, the little, the little man called us up. Well, we must get a preacher $900.5 million, but thanks, a U of M. They gave the preacher the money, but we gonna cut the ribbon about four more days from now. And you gonna see, black people's gotta eat too, like in Detroit. Not to wait, wait for no 10 years. In 14 years, we use that we is. Now, tick tock that, America, stay tuned.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Mrs. Jackson.
Good evening. My name is Ms. Jackson. I am Kiki's mother. I am Kiki's mother. LaShawn, you say you didn't hear the video? So I'm gonna play it again for you so you can hear it.
And I told you, but you keep, I ain't trying to keep hearing that shit. That shit is in my pants. I'm trying to lay the fuck down. I'm tired. Fucking tired. I didn't leave y'all to play all this shit, and I didn't plan no people popping up here. My fucking trip was already planned. I wasn't giving that shit up. These was fucking straight up. I did what I supposed to do. I did what the fuck I supposed to did.
We still want protection, nigga. You just fucking left us.
Kiki, well, why don't you just go find somewhere you can be protected? Did you feel that way? If I didn't protect y'all, if I didn't go get a fucking PPO and ta, and take you all down there and do the same shit? Come back on some bullshit.
I just, the picture she got with you on there, that, that's the date you fuck on it?
Damn, man. See, this motherfucking shit. They need to fuck her up. Tell me, why ain't fuck it now? So I come on in your shit.
Okay, so right now, that proves that he don't stay at 606 Mont Street. And I want to say this to all y'all who have daughters. Y'all should be listening to this. That could be your daughter. You know, LaShawn, I appreciate you talking to me that day. But again, that could be your daughter, and you be standing in the same spot I'm standing in. I, I'm not here to bash none of y'all, but the thing is, this my child. I'm gonna walk all the way with her, 10 toes down. And till y'all get that demon up off of here, if it be 20 years, I'm coming down here 20 years. I'm coming 20 years strong. The thing is too, I have granddaughters. I don't want nobody beating on my granddaughters. And like you said, you'll be seeing them. I'm gonna see him.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Beverly Biggs Levy.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Yes. I'd just like to remind everyone to put their cell phones on silent.
Thank you.
For our council rules.
Thank you.
My name is Beverly Biggs Levy. I'm in the third ward. You guys don't never start on time. And it's, I, I know that it was some names before me call. You, my guys must have took them out because of the mere fact that you have one person here, which is Candace. And you're not even here, and y'all do roll call. You shouldn't do roll call until everybody is here. And we need to keep standing on that ground because of the mere fact, y'all doing what you want to do. It's not fair to us that we have to sit here and wait 20 minutes to everybody get here. If it started at 4:30, all you guys should be here at 4:30. Not 4:31, not 4:35, not 4:44. This is ridiculous. And y'all, y'all sit like you don't know what's going on, Devina. You know what's going on. And this is sad. You don't want us to put nobody's name in, but you don't want us to speak either. And it's not fair to the people that we have to wait on you guys. But you want to start coming in at 4:30, want to know why? Is it five names in the thing and ain't but three people in here? Make this make sense. You're not doing what you're supposed to do for the city. But I see Lydel was trying to get her little money last week, and she had a fit because y'all didn't agree on it. Come on, y'all, let it make this stuff make sense. You know, you, you broke, but you wanted to put up $50 the other week to, with Tanya. You know, who all got their 50 to go to the Y. But you don't want to get Leon out of that seat knowing he done beat this woman. He want to be a part of a brutes for women's. Man, you beating on women's. This is a joke, and y'all sit up there like it ain't nothing. If it was my child and anybody else's child, they want to be heard. It's not fair. You have this psychopath on this seat, and y'all look down talking about innocent until proven guilty. Innocent until proven guilty, he's guilty. They arrested him, and he's still going to court. That's innocent until proven guilty. That's guilty. Y'all need to wake up and have a blessed day.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Stanley Wood.
I wore my purple today because domestic violence doesn't have a month. It's 24/7/365. I'll be all over the place. First, the opioid money. I sent a formal request to the Attorney General's Office today to have a audit done with the city of Flint and spending money for the service center on Clyo Road. I've spent time the last month reading the opioid requirements and stuff. It's 573 pages. That's a lot of, a lot of pages. And then I read the, what directs things. And one thing that really caught my mind is that says, "At least 70% of payments must be directed toward future remediation." And I went further onto this. Handing out Narcan and teaching somebody how to use it does not justify having a service center using opioid money. It talks further about, you know, what, how many different guidelines got to be followed. We definitely aren't following that, but that's beside the point. Councilwoman Shet, I know when I was doing a little background on your residency, I noticed there's six people registered at your address that you have listed to registered voters. That seems like an awful lot of people living in a small apartment. I really thought you'd be registered at your new address, which I'm not going to disclose. But luckily, both of those are in the seventh ward. And then 250384T, real, reallocation of ARPA funds to Ashbury Church. Just curious on how long the mayor will sit on that one too. These churches need the money, need the funding. And it was approved months ago, and then the mayor sat on it forever. So I'm just curious how long this will be sat on too.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Marcia Talbert.
Welcome to Flint. Good evening, afternoon, evening, council. My name is Marcia A. Talbert, and I visit you again from the beautiful state of California where it was 90 degrees yesterday. And I flew here, and now I'm freezing. Couple things I wanted to just talk about. When I was here in August, and I spoke, and we listened to other people speak about the election and all kinds of things, and it's just sad. There's been no change. I come back four months later, and it's still the same. Five months. Come on, the corruption exists. The puppeting and, and the puppeteers exist. We still don't know how much money is in the ARPA account, Judy. You need to tell us because that's ridiculous. You haven't provided a report since September of 2024. It's ridiculous. The people want to know. Second thing, on August 5th, when I was here, I just so happened to get followed to the elevator. And I heard these footsteps behind me, and God said, "Turn around." I saw this granny-looking shirt, and I said, "No, this chick did not try to follow me on the elevator." See, I think you let the pretty girl fool you. I don't play. It would have been a whole different story had I put my foot into that elevator. Last but not least, because I don't want to talk long right now. I have my shirt on. I'm supporting domestic violence. I am on the support squad. And to Kiki's mother, I have a shirt for Kiki because she is not a victim. She is a survivor. And a black, a black woman, a white woman, a Mexican woman, or whatever woman should never be beat on by a man they supposedly, that supposedly loves them. We all know what lying Leon did. We know he was at Lydel's house. We know he's going to jail, and I will support that 100%. And if he doesn't go, then we have a problem in Flint. We know folks are bought off. We know y'all get money. But lying Leon, he deserves to be under the jail. He is a felon, and he's a punk because I could take him.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Audrey Young Muhammad.
My name is Audrey Young Muhammad. I have on one of the many shades of purple today. Two things I'd like to talk about. One, this coming up Saturday at the library, there's going to be a forum from 3:00 to 5:00 with my beloved sister from Detroit, Dr. Missy Muhammad, will be here addressing pain. She says, "How do you, how do you dress your pain when you don't address your pain?" When we stop dressing our pain, we start addressing our power. She's, has been also one who has gone through a form of domestic violence, and she speaks out on it. She's a counselor. She has her doctorate degree as a social worker. She does counseling. She does many forms. And I told her, "We definitely need you here in Flint." So she does address a lot of the pain that many of us go through. Anyone who has been a victim of domestic violence, and many of us have and don't even know it, because domestic violence come in many forms. But anybody who has gone through any forms of domestic violence, I pray for you. Kiki, I pray for you. Not only just your physical healing, but your spiritual healing, your mental healing. It's a whole bath in there of healing. But one of the things I do also want to address in this short time is we have to get a safety committee back on board with the city council. I've addressed it before that I do know, maybe 10 years ago, there was a safety committee that went through the city council, helped to build a liaison, talked to the state police, sheriff department, city police, tried to find ways that they could bring the community and the different agencies together so that way we can help fight the crime together. It's not one person who can do it. It's not one group who can do it. It's us as a collaborative. But the things we need to make sure as citizens that we feel safe, the ones who want to help, we have to also feel safe. So I just appeal to the council that at some point in time or another, maybe you go back into some of the history to see what it was that they had done. I know it was during the time when Vicky Van Buren was on the, on the council because she was the one who was over that coun, over that committee. I attended a meeting or two with her in the communities of the different churches. But this is something that's going to be very important if we're talking about decreasing the crime in our community. But we do need that to take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Keelani Kopany. Next speaker is Mari Kopany.
Picture this. You are leaving a family member's home with your four children. You pull out of the driveway, and a car pulls up on you. A man in a ski mask opens fire on your car. Bullets fly through your car. Your significant other is shot. A bullet went through your infant's car seat, but by the grace of God, the bullet missed your baby. This is what one of my old friends from the Boys and Girls Club had experienced in Flint right before Halloween. The bullet is still lodged in her vehicle that is now undrivable thanks to the shooting. She hasn't heard a word from the police since the shooting, even though they were supposed to come out and collect the bullet as evidence. The person that shot up their car is still on the loose. Crime in our community is still out of control, and everyone needs to be working together to prevent the next tragedy from happening. Next, this shutdown is teaching us that there is a huge need in our community. One that, one that's always been there, but has been amplified thanks to the shutdown and current political climate, and it's only getting worse. I am glad to see that you are moving forward with the voucher program for residents in our community to receive a 30-lit box of food, but there is, there is more to come to take the pressure off of most vulnerable in our community. I also see on the agenda tonight, you are allocating more funds for the, for Ashbury for their food giveaway. That is great. Now can we, can we also get more funds for St. Mark's even, even while they are recovering from the unsolved arson to be able to continue their work over in second ward? I also would suggest funding, funding to some of the other groups like Well of Hope that are also making sure their pantries are always full and always available to the community. It is time to stop bickering and behaving, behaving like children among yourselves and with the members of the community that you dislike, and time to start working together to make the lives of those who voted for you better.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Rich Jones.
How y'all doing today? First thing, I got a lot of things to say. I know three, three minutes ain't going to handle it, but anyway. First thing is all, the North Flint Food Plaza is opening up this Wednesday. They having their ribbon cutting. I'll talk more about that later. That's enough on that one. I seen them young men up here today, and that was a good thing. I got a chance to talk to some of them downstairs. Flint is being represented, because we all know that. Just because you live in Flint don't mean you go to Flint Public Schools, so. And majority of them young men are residents of Flint. And I talked to them, and I hit their way upside up, if y'all want to help them out. And I feel them when the coaches got up here and said they did it without support from the city. Because I have done many things without support from the city. It's finna do one on Christmas Eve called Another Year Feeds 60. Finna make my second order of 50 Kids Life Matters shirts and 50 Children Life Matters shirts that I give away free to children in the city of Flint next Wednesday. I want to thank everybody, is a couple in here that have donated and helped out. But many haven't. It's just a, a lot of missed opportunities in Flint. I've been just talking to people, you know, they talking about, "We all gotta come together" and this and that. And I'm like them, I just keep it, keep it real. But we always gonna fight. We're never all going to be on the same page. But that stopped because of our disagreement, letting good things that supposed to happen, happen. It don't make no sense what's going on in St. Mark's. That, that's, that's, that's no, that don't make no sense at all. But remember this. The end of the year is coming. The beginning of next year is also the be, the ending of y'all first term. It ain't how, it's important how you start your year. It's important how you do your little middle stuff. But what's most important is how you finish. It's a lot of question marks. Thank you.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
The final speaker for this meeting is Tanya Jones.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Jones. And as always, start opioid crisis is real. I'm advocating for my son, D. Michael. And I want to thank him and thank the ones for, mental health is real. I mean, what I've been going through with my son has been hard, but I want to say it's joyful, and I want to take this time, my three minutes, and give thanks to Ms. McLean. It's her birthday, what's her birthday?
And I have something special for her.
Advocate of the year. I want to take Ariel, take time for Ariel. I want to take time to give to Mari. I'd like to take my time to give to the two young ladies for speaking. And Arthur Wilson, he's not here. And last but not least, Ms. Jerry Winfrey Carter. All the years you've been served, and we thank you, appreciate it. This is Color Law Coalition, and we, the people of Flint. Keep doing what you're doing. And I'm so grateful, because like I say, mental health is real, because I've been depressed. Sometimes I feel like I don't get up, but guess what? I keep getting up. So I want to thank everybody for coming and everybody for keep speaking out, because when I say it get hard, but God is good through it all, and I really appreciate you. Love y'all.
That was our final speaker. It is now time for council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers, only after all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response should be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the 2nd Ward.
Um, thank you. So I would like to, I would like to invite the residents to come out to our proposed schools ordinance, um, excuse me, ah, tongue tied, sorry. The proposed school fighting ordinance listening session is going to be held this Thursday at the Eric B. May Center, right there on 1002 West Homes, from 5:00 to 7:00. And the point is for residents to learn about the proposed ordinance and to add any feedback. Pretty much just to listen to the community, because we can't have anything for the community without the community. So definitely we'd like the community's input. And also, we'd like to cordially invite the community to please come out to the opening of our Flint's North Flint Food Market. It's going to be opening up, like Mr. Jones said, this Wednesday, November the 12th, at noon o'clock. The public is welcome, so come and join the celebration. You will see the shelves stocked, and the employees, they are ready to serve you. So we want to make sure that the residents know. And lastly, just want to also invite the residents to please check out the Flint 2nd Ward Facebook page, because I try to update it with current positive things going on in the city of Flint. So we hear that we have a lot of food insecurity at this point. We want to make sure that we're posting these things. We have a lot of people that are giving away turkey. They're, they're having dinners where you, you can bring your family, come and eat. All things positive and resources here, right there on the Flint 2nd Ward page. And if it's anything that you would like for me to post, to promote something that you're doing that's positive, please shoot it to me inbox or email, so we can get the positive word out. Because it's true, we do need to work together, whether we agree or not, we do need to work together. And so, working together is what caused these young men to win that championship. It helped them sustain a team with no funding, so we can work together, and we can continue to keep more kids off the street. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the 3rd Ward.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. I did have to leave a little bit early on last Wednesday. I'm sorry about that, but I was listening to the Narcan Book Bags that the Twins was giving, and I heard Mr. Stanley would give a donation. So I would like to contribute, because I was watching it later on. I would like to give you guys a donation regarding to those, those book bags for the homeless people. So this is from me and my family. Can one of you guys come and get it for me, please? I know, come on. We just appreciate everybody who's doing positive things in the city of Flint, and I want to continue to support the people that are doing positive things in the city of Flint. And anytime that you need me or anybody in the 3rd Ward, just let us know. Have a great day.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the 5th Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to thank all of the, the residents for coming out. Thank you for being engaged in the process. And secondly, I would like to welcome Marcia from California. Welcome back. And, and thirdly, I would like to thank the Color of Law Coalition for the nice trophy here. Thank you, guys. This means a lot, really, a lot. I've been serving on this council eight years now. Going into the ninth year, and I tell you, it's not, it's not an easy job. It's not. But I'm going to continue to stand in the gap and make sure that our residents are well taken care of. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Okay. Seeing as how there is no one else who wishes to speak during council response, it is now time for the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the 4th Ward.
I make a motion to send the consent agenda to council.
There's been a motion to send the consent agenda to council. Is there support? I will support it. Are there any separations? All right. Seeing as there are no separations, this is the roll call vote to send the consent agenda to council. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Mashat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer is not in. Mr. Jared is not in. The vote is six yes, zero no?
The vote is six yes, zero no. The consent agenda has been sent to council. All we have left is this discussion item for the City of Flint Comprehensive Plan. So I ordered this. This was originally bought by Council President Lewis in another committee. Madam Clerk, this, we probably won't even need all this time. I think we have like a 15-minute discussion, which we probably won't need. I know that we had requested some people be present to have this discussion with us. Are they present with us?
No. I don't want to speak on behalf of the administration. However, when I reached out, the concern was that council, there is no understanding what council wants to happen with this. So I believe that they want, or expect the council to have a discussion about it. And my belief and understanding is, it was on the council agenda in January. I think it made it all the way to like a March or April meeting when it was finally failed. It failed to move. I don't even think it made out of committees, I'm not sure. So, yeah.
All righty. Well, thank you. Seeing as how the, there is no one present to discuss this discussion item, we'll go ahead and close that out.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the 2nd Ward.
Thank you. So, so just wanted to add, because I received the letter, and the, and it came from the Planning Commission, and it was also addressed to administration. So, so all of them received a copy. So when, so when they say that they don't know what's happening, they know what's happening. So I just wanted to make sure that I put that on the record, that it came through us, and they were asking us to complete this MOU, so they can get started on this. I don't know what they don't understand.
Council, uh, hold on. City Administrator Clyde Edwards, could you please join us at the lectern?
Stop the car, Avina.
Thank you for joining us at the lectern. I believe the councilwoman in the 2nd Ward was speaking to the fact that the administration did receive this information. We requested for someone to be present. I think that might have been declined, and so now we are talking to you. I think you're all caught up.
I don't know what document you're referring to, so I'd have to see the doc. I don't know what document was submitted, and what it looks like, and what it says.
There was a document provided to us. It's the MOU, the City of Flint Comprehensive Plan Memorandum of Understanding. And so that's what was provided for us. And it's my, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, just for clarification, was that from, that document was submitted to you from the Planning Commission? Is that, or from the Planning Office? Or where exactly did you get that document from?
Madam Clerk.
This memorandum of understanding was submitted as part of a resolution to the council. So it was on a council agenda. I'd have to look up the dates, but I believe it started in January of 2025. And it just kept getting postponed until it was finally failed. I don't, I think it failed to move out of committees. But it did come from the administration as part of a resolution.
Okay.
There may be someone coming to assist, I'm not sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, but we don't have whatever she just.
Okay. You, you have some information? Yep.
The time is now 5:01, and I hereby call this Finance Committee meeting of Flint City Council to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein?
Present.
Dr. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Johnson is not in. Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Mashat?
Present!
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Present.
Mr. Jared?
Present.
You have six members present?
We have six members preting, present, oh my goodness. Reading of Disorderly Persons City Code subsection. Any person that persists in disrupting this meeting will be in violation of Flint City Code Section 3110, disorderly conduct, assault and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be subject to arrest for misdemeanor. Any person who prevents the peaceful and orderly conduct of any meeting will be given one warning. If they persist in disrupting the meeting, that individual will be subject to arrest. Violators will be removed from the meetings. Are there any requests for agenda changes or additions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I have two. One is, sorry, I'm looking at the number. One change is a correction for Resolution 250386T. The first resolution on the agenda under resolutions. And we're just going to call it a correction. It's for approving the reallocation of ARPA funds to award $150,000 to the North Flint Food Co-op. The resolution that's on your agenda reads, "By the City Administrator." And the second paragraph says, "Whereas the city administration recommends reallocating $300,000." The correction is to change the header to "by the city council," and change that whereas paragraph to "whereas the city council recommends reallocating $150,000." So we're just going to switch the one that's on the agenda for this. The substantive part of the resolution doesn't change, the resolve doesn't change. It's just those corrections at the beginning. The second is an add-on resolution.
Request for information.
What's your request?
Never mind, never mind. I was trying.
The secretary is handing those out. And the second is an add-on from- And the second is an add-on from the administration. It's a resolution to Weinstein Electric Company, Change Order Number Three, for additional electrical services, um, for the wiring of the 12th Street Garage in the amount of $148,960. That's an add-on from the administration.
Okay, I'll order, I'll order that without objection. And that will go, um, be the last resolution. Thank you. Any other addition or change, corrections? Changes or additions, excuse me. Okay, hearing none, it's now time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to address the City Council or its committees must register before the meeting begins. A box will be placed at the entrance to this council chambers for collection of registrations. No additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaker during public comment with only one speaking opportunity per speaker. Madam Clerk, who's our first speaker?
First speaker is Chris Morris.
Is that better? Perfect. Uh, good evening, council. Uh, happy to be here advocating for the North Flint Food Market, uh, and, and, uh, with the resolution for the funding request. Um, you know, exciting, uh, week for us here as we opened our doors on the 12th last Wednesday, um, to a lot of excitement from the community and a lot of support, um, you know, from the news and media, and, um, just an outstanding reception. Um, I see a lot of familiar faces that were there to, to join us and, and, and welcome that and, and shop with us, so thank you very much. Um, you know, I just want to advocate for, you know, the, the, um, release of these funds in support of the ongoing sustainability of the markets and investment in, in your constituents. Um, you know, this is Flint's first, uh, community-owned grocery store, uh, which I think, you know, is pretty exciting. Um, and, you know, just to see the reaction, uh, from, from the shoppers and the, and the member owners and just the community alike, um, it's just, it's been overwhelming, uh, this past week. And, and, um, you know, we would like to, to continue to see that investment go and, and into the people. Um, you know, I think one of the benefits of a co-op and a community-owned grocery store is that, you know, those funds multiply and, and circle throughout the city. I mean, this is all, this is all local investment, you know? So it goes to our staff and their development and, and their ongoing training and professional development. And, uh, those, those monies, uh, you know, feed that, that circular economy there. So unlike some organizations that are headquartered outside, um, this is 100% local. Um, and we would, you know, would hope and ask that the city enthusiastically supports, uh, you know, the project and, and the feat that these, uh, um, individuals were able to pull together uh, over the past 12 years. This has been a 12-year venture for them. Um, so it's just so exciting to see that come, uh, to fruition. You know, I know in the past, uh, when this has come. Okay. Okay, yeah. And I just, you know, I just want to advocate, because I would, you know, we, we want all the, the members to not only, you know, the council members to be not only members of the co-op, you know, you don't have to be a member to shop there, but we, you know, we would love to have you as members. And I know in the past, there, you know, has been thoughts of a conflict of interest, so I know there has been abstention on votes, uh, for, for members that are member owners of the co-op. Um, you know, if there's fear of, uh, you know, any financial conflict, you know, because of, when, when a co-op is profitable, they pay patronage dividends out to their member owners. Right now, that number's around 1,000, and now that with the doors are open, that's growing every day. Um, as I said, I know you wear many hats as council members, and, and your vote for this would, is very important to us. So, you know, we would, uh, suggest that, you know, we don't want to lose you as members, and, and if the financial, you know, the, the potential for patronage dividends is, you know, creating that conflict, you know, we would be happy to work with our board and, and, you know, have a document that you would abstain from any patronage dividends, so you can continue to hold your membership and, and support the market. Yeah, any questions? I guess we're there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Arthur Woodson.
All right, uh, let me start off by, uh, saying that I have a correction to make. Yesterday, I went live, uh, talking about Councilman Leon Alamin, uh, and his funds, ward funds, the $30,000. Uh, I said that, uh, he cut the grass, and he didn't, he used, uh, NAC, and they got paid $2,000. But, the part that I was correct on was that he got $24,000 to his company for doing porches. He voted to give Na- Neighborhood Hub funds, and then turned around and contracted through his company to do the porches, $24,000. What in the world is he doing? The city, he used Abdullah Enterprise. So Tom Wyatt was not able to catch it. The city caught it. And the city has not reimbursed Neighborhood Engagement Hub their 25, $24,000 that they put upfront. This is true, because it was spoke about Monday at their board meeting. You cannot vote to give money to somewhere and then turn around and make money off of it. And then, all the porches that was done was your properties made institute. Damn! Y'all better not pass that resolution for another reconsideration. Uh, Liddell, Councilwoman Lewis, yours is in question too, because you did not give any addresses of the grass that you were supposed to cut. So yours are questionable too right now. $24,000, your own company. I'm hoping that you deny it, because the paperwork will be out. It's sad. How is it that we can't get ahead, because, and then we always screaming, "Black people need to be in position", but the black people are the ones that's robbing the other black people? We put you in position to help, but you turn around and take. That's sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Madam Secretary.
Final speaker for this meeting is David Peachey.
Uh, Dave Peachey, Fourth Ward. I was looking over this, how much money you guys want to spend, which my community won't see any, any of it. $720,000 is going to go out the door. $30,000 for each one of yous, which I don't know what you do it with. But we're back to the store again, almost $500,000. That store just opened. Shouldn't they be able to? They opened a store. Why am I supporting it? You say it's community. Only one community goes to that store. It isn't the Fourth Ward, it isn't the Second, uh, Eighth Ward or the Ninth Ward. It's the First Ward and the Second Ward use it. We're supporting all them. The stores we go to is Kroger's, uh, Fresh Farmers, which is so expensive. Both of them are very expensive, but we go to them, we support them. Why should I have to support your, your? I get a little frustrated over this kind of stuff, because it just doesn't make any sense. Each one of you guys is going to get $30,000 to spend any way you want, is what I understand. If I'm wrong, you can correct me, but I've seen this happen before. I, my neighborhood could use a lot of this money, just to get the, the blight cleaned up, which we've seen very little of it. You can go along with that, am I right? There's things happening in the Fourth Ward that shouldn't be happening anywhere in the city. We have people got camped out where the houses have been tore down. They have actually built roads. They go from Bennett to Broadway. Where the houses were, they drive right straight through. There's a field there, they've made roadways through there. Then you go there at night, and there's 10 cars sitting in this vacant lot, nice cars, and they got campfires going. Now, gee, what do you think's going on? A Boy Scout meeting? There's drug addicts there, there's prostitutes, they all come right down the street. You can see them, nothing being done. Oh, we got, uh, what, uh, Neighborhood Safety Officer, whoever the hell that is. You know, he drives around in a white truck all day long. Must be a nice job. I stopped and asked him, "So what do you do?" Oh, he said, "I put stickers on cars." Come on, how about blights? You got blight? Oh, he said, "I don't do blights." He said, "I got no, I can't call the land bank because it", he can't do anything about it anyway, he puts the stickers on and reports it. How many? It gets very frustrating. If you guys just drove over there once in a while and see how bad it was. They put stones. What's this deal about all these stones around, uh, the blighted property? Did you see that?
Some of them.
Now, that's, that cures blight when you put stones on. They've stole the stones! And besides that, they just throw the garbage over the goddamn stones. How much money did that cost us? I don't see anything being done for my community, and I'm saying my community, because I've lived there for 50 years. And I've come in front of you people so many times. I hope we can do something about it. But don't give that, don't give that store that money.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
That was the final speaker for this meeting.
Thank you. It's now time for council response. Members, council members who may respond once to all public speakers only after all council, all public speakers have spoken. An individual council member's response shall be limited to two minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to do council response? Is there anyone who'd like to respond to the public?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I do want to say thank you to the, to the speakers who are here. Um, but there is also, um, being accountable for our $30,000, which is a once-in-a-lifetime amount of money to spend to use it in a way that we should be able to resee it again. Um, to where we'd be able to kind of share in our, in our wards, to where it would be something substantial. Um, I don't know if that $24,000, Mr. Woodson, was spent to his own organization, but that is something through you, Madam Chair, to the city clerk and city attorney, I would like to have a referral to see where were, was the ward money spent? Um, where did it go? And ultimately, where did it end up at? And wasn't any businesses associated with the council people? I think there needs to be transparency with that. Uh, I spent my money on the Help Center at Bethel United Methodist Church, which has Tuesday through Thursdays. You can go there and get blood pressure testing. You can get cholesterol testing for free, diabetes screening, COVID-19 and flu shots, and testing for free. So that was part of mine. The other part went to Mott Park with the Gone Green Garage, to where we have electric mowers, lawn mowers, rakes, blowers, uh, shovels, anything to help beautify your property. And so we had a responsibility to make sure that we use those to where it would be used in the proper way. So I would like to have a referral to see, I believe the fiduciary was, uh, Neighborhood, Neighborhood Engagement Hub, to see with, with those, because the community deserves transparency. So, I yield the floor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else? Dr. Lewis?
Um, thank you. Um, so I would like to, um, to thank our few speakers that came up, and also, uh, Mr. Peachey, who's out there in the hall. I know he was talking about how the different wards could use, um, those funds. And, um, and a lot of the council people, we use those funds to hit the target, and the target was to benefit the people. And so, um, unfortunately, you know, I hate every time Mr. Woodson comes to the lectern, if he's not calling me a name, it's some kind of crazy accusation. Um, yes, so, as far as my paperwork, please talk to Mr. Tom Wyatt about the paperwork. All of my lots and parcels are documented. So I, I appreciate that. Please double-check that, because we've been cutting and knocking down a lot of grass and bushes in the second ward. And make it so bad, we have a video, and I will share that online again. It's called "The Second Ward Beautification Project", and so we've been beautifying and also getting the subsequent cuts on the land bank lots. That's what I set out to do with my money, because unlike many other wards, yes, we have a lot of blight, we have a lot of abandoned homes. And this is what the neighborhood, the neighbors that come to my neighborhood meeting, this is what they said they wanted done. And that's exactly what we done. So we're looking forward to continue until the next year to do this work, and hopefully my colleagues will support this, so we can do great work throughout the entire city. We know that, um, food, like Councilwoman Burns said, her money helps support a lot of things in the Sixth Ward, as well as mine. Um, Councilwoman Priestley, she's knocking down homes. We know that Councilwoman Machette, she, uh, attending to her neighborhood association as well as other great projects. So we're doing great things with these dollars. And so if we were, if it was passed in the budget and the funds are there, there's no reason why we can't take care of our community. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Councilwoman Priestley?
Go ahead.
Um, thank you to the speakers. Mr. Peachey, I'm going to take my two minutes specifically for you. I hear exactly what you were saying. Um, the Fourth Ward has become what the entire North Side once was, right? Um, the entire East Side of Flint is now becoming what that once was. And so as we see the reinvestment that is happening in, on the North End, we need to see that reinvestment begin to happen, uh, in the Fourth Ward. One thing that I will tell you is that Councilwoman Priestley tirelessly advocates. She does, every single solitary day. Um, to the point where, you know, she's taken up trying to figure out, you know, housing, trying to figure out brownfields, just different things that can help the Fourth Ward. And so what I will do is I will commit myself to helping you, um, kind of figure out how we solve some of the issues that you were talking about. So I, I'm assuming she has the particular streets where you said some of the blocks had been taken. And so I will commit to helping her figure out, you know, what's another step that can be taken, and how she can continue, because she has already gotten rid of so many abandoned buildings. Uh, also, I will commit to having a meeting with, uh, Councilwoman Priestley and the Land Bank, uh, because there are some conversations that are well overdue in all of our wards as it pertains to the Land Bank and some of the properties. Uh, and so I think it is time that, um, just as a council, that we get a report on what's happening, because I know that there were, there was some funding allocated for demolition of properties, and so I just think it's time that we all get that update. Uh, and then additionally, what I will say is I hate when it feels like, because you've been neglected so long, that you feel like it has to be an either-or. I feel like we can support and uplift the food market, as well as support and uplift the Fourth Ward. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm just going to piggyback on that and, and ask you, as well as Councilwoman Priestley, to bring the Land Bank in to give us a presentation on demolitions, or whether it be the next finance or this upcoming, um, special affairs. If we could reach out to Land Bank and do a half-hour presentation, something on where we are, if we're behind schedule, over budget, stuff like that, so that the public can know. I mean, it's been, oh, I think it's been two years since we gave them money, and we haven't heard nothing. So. I, I would, I would ask the chairs if we can coordinate that and schedule for an upcoming meeting, because it is a, uh, a pressing matter to, because there's still houses in every person's ward that need to come down. And I think from my last count, they are behind schedule. So I would like to hear from them. So if, if we could coordinate that, that'd be great. And I yield the rest of my time.
I'm glad to do that.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
And I would like to say something to that too. In addition to the, um, properties for demolition, you know, I think it'd be a good idea to have Land Bank come in, because we need to talk about the blight on their properties, on the Land Bank properties. Um, and I understand, um, Mr. Peachey, you know, the blighted properties. They need to be clean. And, and I don't know, I don't know.
And, and I don't know, I don't know if the land bank has a blight elimination team or, or what. But we need to discuss that as well, so I would like that, on that discussion too. Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? I'm gonna take my time, Mr. Peachey, thank you so much for pointing out the, the two properties you were talking about. The people were, they gather every day and the road that goes through. I have spoken to the land bank and informed them of those properties. Their, their land bank properties, that, that's, that's what frustrates me so much because so many of my complaints that I receive are land bank and I can't force them to do a thing. I, all I can do is ask them and they do it on their own timing. And it, I would like to, I'd like to get rid of the land bank. One hundred percent. And then in regards to the stones that are in the driveway and stuff, it's supposed to stop them from dumping. But we know they can go around it. And that's what I think they're gonna do on that roadway that they've got between Bennett and Broadway. I think they're gonna put a log or something there, but they'll just walk, they'll just drive around it. But I suspect that's what they will do for that property. All right, that is my time, we are now to the consent, reconsideration. We have a reconsideration of Resolution 250371-T, reallocation of funds, ARPA category, city council ward priorities. I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion on this reconsideration?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I move that we reconsider Resolution 250371.
There's a motion on the floor from the councilwoman in the second ward to reconsider 250371, is there support?
Councilwoman Priestley, may I interject?
Yes, go ahead.
In regard, in regards to this reconsideration for the Resolution 250 and 371-T, the legal department has been advised that we may need to take a look at whether or not these resolutions need to be vetted by the legal department before they are discussed and voted upon. So we would like at least a couple of weeks to research this. There was a case in two thousand eight Williamson versus City, Flint City Council that we believe may require the legal department to review all resolutions for proper form.
Thank you.
So that would, that would also include 250386-T as well.
Okay, so it is the legal department requesting us not to reconsider it at this time?
At this time, yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
I do understand Attorney Wallace's concerns and the legal department's concerns. But the idea is that the council would not act or approve a resolution that has not been signed off on. If the argument is to approve as to form, it's possible to give this to the legal department so they can approve it as to form. And it could be referred to special affairs. And then at that time when they also, if it makes it that far, before the council approves it. Because if the question is it needs to be signed off, approved as to form, as opposed to voting on a resolution that's not signed, that's what that legal opinion is about, that's what that judgment was about. I just wanted to point that out to the council.
And if I, if I may follow up on that.
Go ahead.
And that, that could very well be true, but the city, the, the attorney's office will need at least a couple of weeks to research this issue, whether or not it has to review all resolutions before they're submitted. So we respectfully request that time to do that.
So we do have a motion on the floor to reconsider?
I retract my, my motion.
Okay, that has been withdrawn.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So that would die for a lack of a second?
Yes, a lack of, of support, any motion, because the motion was withdrawn. So there is no motion on the floor for this reconsideration?
Motion to interrupt the consent agenda?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to, by the councilman in the eighth ward to approve the consent agenda, is there support?
Support.
Supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward, is there any separations?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
250386.
Yep.
250391.
Okay.
387.
Okay.
Uh, that's all I have.
And that's it?
That's all I have.
Okay, are there any others, go ahead. Okay.
That will be all for me.
Okay, is there anyone else? 389. 389?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
That Resolution 250386-T also is included in that request.
Yeah, that's why it's separated, yeah. Any others? Anyone else? We have one resolution then in our consent agenda, that's 250390 to M-Tech Company for the purchase of two sewer cleaning combination trucks for the sewer department. Yes, ma'am.
You also have an add-on, number one.
Oh, the add-on, thank you so much, I did, I did not write that on my thing. And we have the add-on, which is to Weinstein Electric for additional electric services. So this is the vote for the consent agenda. Come on, why are you keep going back there?
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no. And my computer is really acting weird today. Give me just a second to update my note. Okay, our first separated resolution is 250386, reallocation.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Motion to postpone indefinitely.
There's a motion on the floor to postpone indefinitely?
Support.
Supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward, the motion was made by the councilman in the eighth ward. This is the vote to postpone indefinitely.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no. The next resolution is 250391, reallocation of ARPA funds for the North Flint Food Market Cooperative. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I would like to move this resolution to council.
There's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman, the second ward, to send this to council, is there support?
Support.
Supported by the councilman in the first ward, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So I spoke with Dr. Flynn and stated that I was willing to support one hundred and fifty thousand. And so our conversation, he was okay, then I was told that there was a second one which was put back up there for three hundred thousand. For a recon, when I, this probably should have been a reconsideration because it's been before us before, several times, at three hundred thousand. So his question was what happened to all the money and Flint never did a buy-in. Flint actually did do a buy-in underneath Dr. Mayor Karen Weaver. Two hundred and fifty thousand was given out of community block grant funds for this project to obtain the building. I did, and I spoke with him when he was here, when I, my last meeting was with Ridgeway White, when he said he was giving the one point five million. So I am at, he did state at this meeting too, he did not need city council money to open the doors. I did tell him there would be some struggles along the way and some other conversations, but I was willing to do one fifty and then we will see six months down the road. I am not changing from that, I'm very firm on that. And it's, it is what it is, I had no idea that they were going to, and I'm gonna go through you, Madam Chair, to the city attorney. We have did Attorney Wallace resolutions before that we never, you know, we're supposed to be co-ecobrantists. So to hear it takes, we said three weeks to give a legal opinion, that if, if we have three hundred thousand, we should definitely have a hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that a question?
Right. Pardon me?
Is that a question?
Yes, she was, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Winfrey Carter was talking at the same time, I'm sorry, so yes.
Actually, I stated we would like respectfully request a couple of weeks, not three weeks, to research whether or not all resolutions need to be reviewed by the legal department.
Okay. So I've never seen that before, as long as I follow Flint city government, that all of them have to be reviewed before we present them. I've never seen that, so that, that has not been our, our precedence and it will slow our process down and how government business will be done.
For information.
What's your request?
Is, is it just because it's from the city council or is it because, or is it based on the city administrator ones that they submit too, that they need weeks?
It, yeah, is it through, to whom?
The speaker, that's the only other person I can.
Yeah, but Attorney Wallace, can you answer that question?
Can you repeat that question, please?
Is it because of the council, is the same, is it the same for the city, the administration as it is for the council, that before they, a resolution is created, that it must be reviewed or vetted?
And that's what we're, that's what we want to determine, whether all resolutions that emanate from city council or the administration need to come through the legal department.
So that's kind of late in the vetting process to do that and will, I think drastically slow down the business of everything. So thank you for that, for answering. So I am at one fifty, I'm not doing three hundred thousand. And so if you would like to amend it, my colleagues down, then I will do one fifty, then we will see. That is my commitment, that was my word that I gave for the market to see. I did speak with Mr. Flynn about, when I sat down with Ridgway. And it was, he did what he promised me he would do. He said he would give one point five million and he did. And when I'm looking at that, he kept his word, because at that point we were, I think, four-four. We didn't even have a, we, we were stuck at four-four for about a year. And so I am willing to do the one fifty, I'll let my colleagues speak, I'm not gonna do a bunch of back and forth, I'm firm on that. If we can see, and through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Moore, if you can hear, or Mr. Borley. How much do we have in all of our ARPA categories and what do we have that's available to even use for food access? Or any other categories that we could put this in? Borley. And my time is, by the time you get here, it's gonna wind down, I'm sorry. Can we, can we get that, please? What's available in the other categories with it being a new business, what we can use and how much is available?
We can get that information to you pretty quickly.
Okay, that would be great if you, thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? I'll take my time. So we recently gave from ARPA twenty thousand dollars to established businesses in this city to improve their services. There is a hardware store in the first, first ward, been in existence for sixty years. We gave them twenty thousand dollars and they're struggling and they're in existence. We gave twenty thousand dollars to Luigi's who put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into heating and cooling that was required because their system died over the summer. Got another twenty thousand dollars for a business, another business that's been in existence for sixty years. Those were grants. I object to giving a new business money to, in order to, to make a go of it. If you can't make a go of it, why are you there? You don't need public support to keep going, as a rule. I am not going to vote, besides the fact that my, my, my residents have told me over and over and over again, do not support the North Flint Food Market with any ARPA dollars. Not gonna support a new business that has cost millions and twelve years to get into existence. Congratulations, I want you to succeed, but you won't succeed with my vote and with, with city dollars on my, through my vote. Second round, anyone?
Madam Chair, go ahead. Well, I mean, you've been that way since the beginning with the popcorn popper and the pineapple cutter and the cupcakes that you wanted for a dollar or whatever. So I, I do support the market, it's a beautiful market. But I want to make sure we don't know really where our finances are. And I was very comfortable with my decision, I stand on my word when I said, let's come back. The other part is there was a forensic audit, it was a forensic audit which was done. They stated that everything, but some things you couldn't account for, one, COVID. You couldn't account for the price of labor and materials tripling and sometimes more, and security. So whether it's on the, the north end or whatever, if it's a good project, I'm gonna support it. My ward is probably a fifty-fifty, but one thing that they have said, many of them in the meetings, the multitude of meetings that I go to, I have six associations, is that they support growth for the entire city. And when we talk about the entire city and the small micro loans that was given, sometimes they just have, need to have someone who advocates for them in a positive way. So if your councilperson isn't advocating for your ward, you may have a problem. There is no limit to, you can, we, if you have, public transportation takes you right there. If you can get public transportation, you can get in your vehicle, you can take an Uber, you can order your groceries and get them delivered, but it is a beautiful market. Now that the doors are open, we did have a buy-in which was under Dr. Mayor Karen Weaver. And with hers, it was two hundred and fifty help acquire. The food cooperative in Detroit took fourteen years to open. It took fourteen years. And so as the city with the business, we give Oprahs, we give them all the time, so what's the difference? Just voted for seventy-two million dollars to give to Ash the capital, but then they wrote checks to people campaigns. So we're stating that we're going to give, to help this market along. I'm comfortable with one fifty, we can come back, that doesn't mean enough. And let's see, because if you're in this, in the city, we're building a relationship. They'll give a tax break, but they won't give something to help start something. And I have stated, the markets in my ward that are really near, we do not have a Kroger on my side of town. The closest Kroger is a, there's only one Kroger in Flint, Ridgefield Road. All the other one are outside of the city boundaries. And so when we look at the stores, they're there, cleanliness is a problem. This store is, is nice inside, it's clean, you know, they serve hot food, I hear at a good price. And so if you don't like what's being advocated in your store or in your, your neighborhood and you've got problems, you don't like what you see, you wonder why other people are out there getting it done, because they're doing the work and listening to the people. I get streets, sidewalks, demolition, I get it done because I'm doing the work for my residents and I listen to them.
Thank you, any other discussion? Any other discussion in the second round? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say this, I support the market one hundred percent, I'm a member of the market. And with that, I cannot vote to, I'm gonna have to abstain my vote. And I'm not gonna rescind my membership. It would be a conflict of interest for me. And I mean, I hope that we can get the votes for the market, but I'm a member, it's a conflict of interest and I will need to abstain my vote. And that's just, that's just it, that's the bottom line. I would think that... I would think that, you already spoke, right? Yeah, and this is the second round. We can, we can actually.
Second round so far. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, this is supposed to be through the chair?
Yeah. And we could, we could amend this resolution to make it to the one hundred and fifty thousand. So, but how many, I'm gonna yield the floor and let the rest of my colleagues speak, and I've said what I needed to say. Thank you.
Any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair. Go ahead. Thank you. I've stated time and time again, I'm in full support of this market. I believe that we can walk and chew gum at the same time, even though sometimes it seems as though we cannot. We can. And so I believe we can support this market and both uplift and support for the fourth ward as well as any other ward. And so with that said, I know we're kind of trying to figure out how this works. I think we have two ways that this can work right now. We can go ahead and let this vote play out, and however it goes, it goes. If for whatever the reason, this particular vote is not successful, there is an opportunity to make another motion on this in which you amend. So that's completely up to my colleagues. As I stated, I am, I will gladly be voting yes for this three hundred thousand. I yield.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I will not be supporting this today. It's clear that this keeps coming before us with different dollar amounts. And, and to the point that some of my colleagues have made several times is, they had enough money to open the event center beforehand, and now all of a sudden, they didn't need the money to open, and now we want to give them a hundred and fifty because we have no, no idea why? What is this money gonna be used for? They came before us before and said that they needed dollars to train employees for the opening. Well, now they're open, so what is this money gonna be used for? So, I still cannot support this. I can't support one fifty. I can't support one dollar, to be honest with you. It's just not gonna happen. So, I'll yield, and I will continue to not vote for this. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I can respect Councilwoman Priestley, because she said from day one that she didn't support you. I can respect that. But it's kind of hard to sit here and hear people say that they support you, but they don't want to give you the amount that you asked for to sustain. You know, you've been coming here for a long time, a very long time, and asking for these funds. And you know, I, I went to the food market, and man, several hundred of the residents went to the food market. And they saw how instrumental and how important that is to the community. So, I don't, I, in good faith, I can't sit here and give you accolades and tell you how much you need it, and then shortchange you. I don't think that's fair. But in any event, I, I do support. And so if the only way that you can get anything is voting for the one fifty, I'll support that. But I support the three hundred thousand. I support the efforts that you all have put into, you're hiring our residents. When I was in the store, I was talking to a fourth ward resident. So when Miss Priestley say that the fourth ward is in Florida, that's not really true. You have fourth ward people that are employed at the store. I asked some more, you know, employees where they live, you know, in terms of residence-wise. A lot of them, they didn't know the ward, but you know, they expressed, some of them lived in the fifth. There was a few in the sixth, and a handful in the seventh. So I didn't poll everyone, but that just represents how many people that this food market is touching. And so in good faith, I can't say that this is fair, because it's not. You know, this bodies, people on the bodies said that if you were to get the one point five million, that they would vote for you. They went back on their word. They didn't do it. And that's very unfortunate.
Be respectful.
So. And you know, and we have the videotape to prove it. They said that they will support you with three hundred thousand dollars. So I don't want anyone to get up out of their seat and go to the bathroom to avoid the vote. I support you at three hundred thousand, as well as one hundred and fifty thousand. And I also support you with my patronage, and so the second ward. So thank you so much for believing in us to put that food market over there. But I, I'll tell you, I, it begs the question, if this market was in the eighth ward or the fourth ward, would they support that? I think they may. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? I'm gonna take just a few seconds to dispute what Dr. Lewis said, and that is that I have received more and all negative comments towards this food market. Maybe there are others that do support it, but I have not heard from them. So my, my vote stands. I have been consistent. Same with Mr. Pfeiffer. We have been standing firm that with no money towards the North Flint Food Market, we don't wish you to fail. What's your request?
You don't remember the meeting where he said he will vote for it if they got money from mine?
No, I don't remember him saying that, but I don't remember everything.
Okay.
He may have said that. I honestly don't remember him saying that. But I lost my train of thought. I wish you success. I want you to succeed. I really and truly do. I just don't think it should be done on public money. This is the vote to send Resolution two-five-zero-three-nine-one to council.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain for reasons stated before.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
I abstain.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
The vote is four yes, three no.
Madam Chair. Yes, ma'am. She's gotta finish reading this.
She, unless she wants to change her vote.
No, I want to keep my vote. Thank you. I'm gonna amend it after you've finished with the count.
Okay, four yes, three no, two abstentions?
The vote is four yes, three no, two abstentions.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend it to one hundred and fifty thousand for the North Flint Food Market.
There's a motion on the floor by the council. Yes.
Is, is that not, only main motions can be made. That's the second.
You're right. That is an amendment to this motion.
That's not, that's not a valid motion.
That is correct. You are correct. Going on.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I was about to, I was just about to, I would like to make a motion to reconsider Resolution two-five-zero-three-nine-one dash T, reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative.
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider two-five-zero-three-nine-one by this councilwoman in the seventh ward. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by the councilwoman in the fifth ward. Is there any discuss, uh, this is the vote to reconsider.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I mean, I could reconsider.
I think you can vote for the reconsider.
Yeah, I can reconsider.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, two no?
The vote is seven yes, two no. So this is the, so.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to amend the three hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand. The three hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand.
We need a main motion first. We need a motion to.
I'm sorry, Madam, we're reconsidering it.
We, we're reconsidering, but now you gotta make a motion to send it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to send two-five-zero-three-nine-one dash T, reallocation of ARPA funds, North Flint Food Market Cooperative to council.
There's a motion on the floor to send Resolution two-five-zero-three-nine-one dash T to councils. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by the councilwoman, the fifth ward.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
That was sixth ward. Madam Chair.
Oh, you're right, sixth ward. Thank you very much.
I would like to make a motion to amend the amount from a three hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand.
There's a motion on the floor to amend the amount from three hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand. Is there support?
Support.
They're supported by the councilman in the first ward. This is the most, the vote to amend. I don't believe we do, do discussion on amendments.
We amend. Nope. No discussion.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain.
Ms. Burns?
Support.
No.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
I abstain.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
The vote is four yes, two no, two abstentions?
The vote is four yes, whoops, second. Four yes, two no, and two abstention. That motion fails.
Are you kidding me?
So this is now the vote to send back, back to the main motion, two-five-zero-three-nine-one dash T to council.
Wait, what?
This is the vote to send it to council, as it stands, because the amendment failed.
So you're, you need to state the amount for the three hundred thousand.
For the three hundred thousand, correct.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
I abstain.
Mr. Alamin is not in. Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. The vote is three yes, three no, one abstention?
The vote is three yes, three no, and one abstention. Going on to the next resolution.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to send two-five-zero-three-eight-seven to council.
There's a motion on the floor from the councilwoman, councilman in the eighth ward, for, to send two-five-zero-three-eight-seven to council. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by the councilwoman in the seventh ward. Is there any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Tyler refused to come. Is there anyone in the administration who can speak to Resolution two-five-zero-three-eight-seven?
So that is the basement, kind of when you walk over by the dome. That's where.
Light?
Community development will be housed. No one's operating out of it right now. They were just, they were, but they were displaced due to the other renovation and things. Was it fourteen people? Fourteen staff members will be in there. So what they're doing there is a lot of cosmetic work. They're also knock, that was very customer service-based in there at one point years ago. So there's kind of an area with a now non-functioning. I don't know what you'd call it.
So this doesn't say, this doesn't say that this was a budgeted expenditure, so was this proposed in the budget? Do we know?
Right, so this, the funds to cover this is an existing OFAEC grant that can be used for this from 2021. Two-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-one-hundred.
Can you tell me what OFAEC means?
Uh, I can look it up. Give me a second. I just know the acronyms. Give me.
I'm not familiar with that acronym, so, okay.
Uh, Flint Area Enterprise Community. It's from 2021.
And so that's still active, five years later?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it is, yeah. So.
No, no, this is frustrating to me. Like, this has been in disrepair for years, right? So how in that, I'm trying not to cuss, how do we sit on funds available for five years on something that's been in, and I think there's a story on the Flint Police Department, and how their, their facilities are crap. Like, why are we sitting on funds for five years in a grant to, to get this stuff done? It boggles my mind.
I can't answer what my predecessors decided to do. I can only say that I identified this as a way of doing it now.
How much?
So two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand will be coming from that.
And that will zero out that account?
I don't know. I will look, I will get that figure to you.
I would like to know if we have other dollars sitting out there to take care of these other nonsense problems that people are working in hazardous conditions.
I will, I will certainly look at that.
Okay.
For you.
And, uh.
But do you want more detail of what it's gonna do?
Yeah, 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 absolutely. Sure, sure, sure.
I have it here. If you give me a second. So we're looking at electrical upgrades, flooring replacement, replace drop ceiling and lights, window treatment, paint, and then the fourteen office workstations.
Do we have any asbestos in that area?
I, I don't know. That would be a question for maintenance. I, I don't know.
Okay.
That would be a question.
I'd be interested to know if we're gonna abate any asbestos, because usually with these, with these pipes, we have asbestos. So I'd like to know if we're gonna abate it or just do the renov, renovation and not disturb it.
I can check on that.
If you would.
I can, I can ask Lee.
Because I want to make sure that if we do asbestos abatement, that they're, whoever does it is properly licensed.
We did the bid walkthrough. We are doing carpet squares like this. That's one thing that Lee's working on, is making sure they all kind of look the same. So if something is spilled or whatever, it's just easily, we have it on, you know, bulk. So that's gonna go over top of the flooring. The rest of it in there is a lot of block wall.
No, I'm, so the, the heating pipes that run through the ceiling for the boiler.
Well, that's got a drop ceiling in it. So I believe the ceiling tiles are being replaced, but I don't know if anything else is gonna be disturbed above, underneath, I should say, that ceiling tile. So.
So we're just gonna carpet tile, if there's asbestos tile below, we're just carpet tiling over top of it?
Yes. Yeah, nothing will be disturbed in that way. We peeled it up, and they didn't look like they were nine by nine. But, I mean, that's a corner, right? I mean, you never know in the center until you get in there, but.
Thank you. That is your time. And any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, to you two, Mr. Edwards. Mr. Edwards, I have sent the email to have Lee from Facilities here.
Mr. Edwards?
And, well, I'm gonna talk quiet while you're walking, because I'm concerned, the buildings are all like the age, and the problems are the same issue. And I believe this is the south building, and I believe it flooded too, didn't it? I think the whole, almost every complex, and we've had other issues even throughout, even in the clerk's office, where there was mold, black mold that had to be remediated. So is there a reason why Lee isn't here?
Uh, yes, there is. He had a family matter. That's his, he had already taken the time and everything to, to be off today for his family situation. But he was, uh, he's aware of, of those situations, and has had all of these various locations tested, air quality testing, as well as looking at what those situations are in terms of repair. Yeah, we're working toward, we're working through it. I mean, that's the best way to tell you, is that we have such a number of issues with this old historical complex that we're working through them as fast as we can.
So, and that's one of the things why I wanted Lee to be here, because when I started with you in 2019, these issues were still here. And it's serious with people, as they are working and sending pictures and meeting, that people want to be heard. If you're working and you're sitting there for eight hours, and that's in the, I think this is in the south building, that you're working in mild, mildew, molded areas, the ceiling tiles, where above the ceiling tiles, the asbestos has been disturbed. Because we don't have going through for emergency managers, the upkeep wasn't important to emergency management at all of the, of the buildings. And so, I would like to speak with Lee to actually know, and has he seen, and I think that's something we all should, because it's not just this building, it's actually all of them. It's all of them. And so, assessing the issues, because one thing is what I'm hearing is people who work after retirement, and when asbestos is disturbed, it can be ten, twenty, thirty years later with the microscopic fibers that people are developing cancer. And we know that those fibers, when disturbed, get into your lungs and they're inhaled. So, I'm going to let my other colleagues ask questions and to, to see, but I know not just here, but with the police station. And I also wanted to know, or do you know, where is he at with the police department, with the ladies locker room? That's been bid four times, I'm told.
Uh, I think at this point, I don't know exactly where he's at. But I will put in as a caveat that as we are moving towards the budgetary process, that you keep these aspects in mind, that, you know, his budget is not a very big budget when you talk about facilities management. So, that is a conversation that certainly one can have with the CFO. And so, I would say to council, keep in mind this very issue when you see an inflated facility budget.
I get, yeah, I get that one hundred percent. So, that we have to take money to allocate to, to improve these buildings, which are in poor repair. Emergency management did not care. And so, when people are saying, I'm sitting at my desk and a big chunk of cement fell down in the police department, I'm concerned. The women in the police department, that whole part, when women first were allowed to be police officers, it has not had one upgrade, not one. The toilets overflow, the sinks, it's a mess, and it's nasty, and the women don't want to stay here and work. They don't. The men's has been upgraded, but not the ladies. And if you are a female, females go through different type of things that, you know, you're afraid to flush the toilet. So, there are some things that I want to speak to Lee, and I'm going to let my colleagues, but at the end, I'm going to send it to special affairs. I hope you can have Lee here, because we need to address, no one wants to sit in a room where they have a fan on and the carpet is soggy. They don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. And tell them if it's somebody's home, they're going to rip it up and throw it out. And so, we need to make sure that when they're working here, that at least you can breathe the air, you can feel comfortable. You don't have to look up and see a rusted pipe with asbestos that is wrapped with that has been disturbed.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round?
Any other discussion in the first round? Last call. Any discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I would like to make a motion to send this to special affairs.
So, motion on the floor by the councilwoman, sixth ward, to send to special affairs. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the eighth ward. This is the vote to send resolution two five zero three eight seven to special affairs.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no, though that resolution would be sent to special affairs. Let's see if Lee can be there for that discussion. All right, the next resolution is two five zero three eight eight, Metron Front Barnier, for purchase of water meters for the Water Service Center.
Actually, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would actually like to make a motion to reconsider resolution two five zero three nine one dash T.
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider two five zero three nine one T. Support. Let me go back to my notes. Supported by the councilwoman in the sixth ward. This is the vote to reconsider.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Excuse me, Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, two no?
The vote is seven yes, two no. That, now I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to send resolution two five zero three nine one dash T to council.
There's a motion on the floor to send two five zero three nine one dash T to council. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the first ward.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the amount from three hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand.
There's a motion on the floor to amend the, a dollar amount from three hundred thousand to one hundred and fifty thousand. Is there support? Support. Supported by the councilwoman in the fifth ward. This is the vote to amend. It's sixth ward. Sixth ward. Why do I keep saying fifth ward? I'm so sorry.
Mr. Jarrett?
I abstain.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Excuse me, the vote is five yes, two no, two abstentions?
The vote is five yes, two no, two abstentions. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, could you please state that the amendment passed?
The amendment passed, sorry, yes.
Thank you.
So, the men, this is to send the res, amended resolution of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to council.
Madam Chair, it becomes two five zero three nine one point one, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And this is, is there any discussion on this? What is your point? Correct. Correct.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion to send resolution two five zero three nine one point one dash T to council.
There's a motion on the floor and supported by the seventh ward, supported by the councilman in the first ward, to send the amended resolution two five zero three nine one point one T to council. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? This is the vote to send two five zero three nine one point one to T, uh, to council.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
I abstain. State reasons stated before.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
No.
Mr. Jarrett?
I abstain.
The vote is five yes, two no, two abstentions?
The vote is five yes, two no, and two abstentions. That will go to council.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Make a motion to send two five zero three eight eight to council.
There's a motion on the floor to send two five zero, oh, wait a minute, yep, two five zero three eight eight to council by the councilman in the eighth ward. Is there support? Supported by the councilman in the first ward. Any discussion?
That was me who separated it.
You separated it?
Yes, ma'am. May I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Thank you very much. I just need, um, just a quick, I just want on the record, explanation or review of what this is. Is there someone from the administration that can come speak to this really quickly?
Yes, come forward, please.
So, good evening, council. My name is Howard Hudson, the new supervisor for the Water Service Center.
Welcome. What's your first name?
Howard.
Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Very nice to meet you, or meet you in this particular arena, I should say. I, I just needed a really quick overview about the water service, about the meters and what's going on there with the Water Service Center.
So.
Can you speak into your mic, please?
So, currently, the meters we're using are the Badger meters, and we want to move to these Metrons. We currently have some Metrons, but the Badgers are unreliable. They're, they're failing, and they're hard to read. They're on the AT&T network, where the Metrons are on the Verizon network, and we think that they're a little bit better at reading and easier for us to read.
So, you, you're, but you're just switching networks?
No, we're switching meters.
You're switching the meters, right?
The Badgers are on, on one network, and the me, the Metrons are on another network.
All right, um, thank you. That, that's all I needed from this. I just wanted to gain an understanding of what was happening there. I yield.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
So, um, this resolution says that you're, this is for an emergency purchase, to purchase a hundred and ninety of them. Is that true? Or is this, because this is three thousand dollars a meter, that's how much we're paying? Or is this resolution wrong?
No. No, they, they are that expensive, the, the water meters.
So, water meters, a three thousand dollar, a meter's three thousand dollars?
And, yes.
So, I mean, explain the ROI on that. I mean, what, how do we have a three thousand dollar meter? I mean, you're talking three years to recoup just the cost of the meter of water running through it. How does that make sense?
Well, I, I'm not going to say that that makes sense, but that's what they cost. The Badger meters cost more than that.
But, so, if the Badger meters aren't working, why aren't we going to Badger and saying, fix them?
We have went to Badger, and they have.
Because, no offense, because we, we, we have half million dollar resolutions for water meters, it seems, every other month. I know it's not that often, but, and, and you're, and you're new here, but we have water meter resolutions that come before us for half million dollars. It, on a regular basis. So, like, how are we going through them that fast? Why are we not calling warranty on them or whatever else? Like, and if this is three thousand dollars a meter, this doesn't seem like it's sustainable when our water department is twenty million plus in deficit. But we want to spend three thousand dollars on a meter? Like, even if somebody did pay their bill, it's going to take three years for us to just pay the water meter off. I, I don't, and maybe there's no question there, but it, to me, it doesn't make one lick of sense, and it, it makes even more sense now why we're twenty plus million dollars in deficit.
Well, I think we're in the deficit because we're not collecting money owed to us.
Even if we paid, I mean, we're making three thousand dollar meter purchases that have a three-plus year ROI, but it seems like we're replacing them before we get the ROI out of them. Like, it, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, Badger isn't keeping up with their end of the bargain. We, we try our best to find out why the Badger meters are failing.
So, why aren't we contacting the law department to sue the shit out of them? Because they have to be under warranty, and we have to have something from them. I'm like, is there, is there a ninety day warranty, and then we're screwed? I, I don't know what. To me, we're not looking at all the avenue, avenues that we can do. We're throwing money at the problem.
So, we, we've sent, so let's just say we have our Badger meters. We'll send our Badger meters back to Badger.
Okay.
At our cost of flying them, shipping them out.
Sure.
They'll test them.
Jiggy, can you speak in?
They, we'll ship our Badger meters out.
Yep.
They'll test them. They'll send them back and say that everything is fine. So, it's like we keep going through a seesaw with them, and it's, it's, it's brutal trying to deal with Badger.
But, but why don't we have any repercussions towards them if we've bought a product? And, you know, I got to imagine these, any other meter, any plumbing device has probably a five-year warranty on it. I would, I don't know what the warranty on these particular ones are, but why aren't we, if they are not executing per their warranty, why aren't the legal department going after them, and we just say, throwing our hands up, and we'll just go to somebody else and spend even more money?
Well, that would be a question I would have to work with the city attorney with.
I mean, at some point, we have to right the ship on the twenty-plus million dollar, and I'm not, and I'm not coming down on you. I know it sounds like, it's just frustration of how we're not doing anything to try to fix the problem. And, and to me, this, this resolution, while it comes before us, I'm sure with good intentions, it just exacerbates our problem. Because when, when these ones don't perform, or they don't execute to their warranty, when we send them back in another year, we're going to be replacing Metron. Well, now Badger will come back around. We're now going to replace Metron with Badger again. Like, it's, it's frustrating. And I apologize for my tone, but it's getting ridiculous with these meters. I yield.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hudson, what is your position again?
I'm the Water Service Center, uh, Water Department Supervisor. I replace Paul.
Oh, okay.
Simpson.
Look, look, I get that part. Okay.
Okay.
All right. But which position, didn't Paul, was he interim for something after he retired, he came back?
Yes, he's on interim basis. Paul is on interim basis.
So, who's our DPW now? Manager? Who's, who's old Rob Benz, who's the new Rob Benzey? That was our, and Mike Brown.
We don't have a, we don't have.
So, we don't have one. I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you. So.
Well, on our end.
Okay. So, the Badger system was paid for by wind funds. It was a nine point two million dollar system. It was prepaid for ten years where the communication would go to your house and read your meter and tell you how much water usage. So, are you saying that it's not properly functioning?
Yes, ma'am. It's not. It's not.
And it goes by cell towers. So, when that truck goes up and down your street, it's supposed to send that signal. Um, and when it, and transmitted, my area has very poor, um, yeah. The broadband is terrible. It, it is. And so, the meters, I know during COVID time, I had to let someone in to change the meter, which is supposed to be a newer meter. What was that, twenty-two, maybe? Twenty-one, twenty-two? And so, here is my thing. The Badger is supposed to be the Cadillac of the systems. It's supposed to be the best system. You have the Badger app. Isn't that we don't know how to work the system? You know, it is supposed to, and I've asked Mr. Moore before, um, and you weren't here, Mr. Hudson?
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, how much is our water leakage that we're using? That system tells you that. You can follow it and keep track of it even on your own phone, but I have the app on my, on my phone, one of my phones. Not my personal, because I don't have room for app on that one. But I have that. And so, I don't know if it's the usage, because people state in other municipalities, it is the best system. Do we know how to operate this system?
I have every confidence in Curtis, our, our meter supervisor, or our meter foreman. He, he does a great job, and he's well knowledgeable about the system.
So, how much of our water are we losing in leakage?
To water mains and?
Through everything. How mu, how much water just goes into?
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to dig in.
The Badger, the Badger system should tell you that. They should have trained, that is such a good system, and I have researched it, I think, and other people. And so, I think that if we get a system that we don't know how to utilize it, then it may not, I, I wanted to ask, because we're going to have to change out everything, am I correct, at some point in time? If we're switching?
No, we're just switch, all you're switching is the meter.
And how many meters total we're going to have to eventually switch out?
Well, there's some of the Metrons already in the system. We use, we use the Metrons currently along with the Badgers.
So, how many are we going to have? Do we know how many of the Badgers we're going to have to change out?
We don't have that number.
We don't have that number. Um, hmm. So, does anybody use the, the app, the Badger app? The water, I think it's on one of these. Do you? Yeah. And, and if you look on it, I think like less than five percent of people are registered to use that in the entire city of Flint. Also, I think was with the RAP program, that if we know that people with you monitoring it, say like you have leakage, or you have a leaky faucet toilet, that part of the RAP program was supposed to come in and say, hey, you have a leaky toilet, let us look at your toilet, and then there was money to replace your toilet, or your kitchen faucet. So that people aren't getting these exorbitant amounts of, because we should know when the leakage. Someone should be able to say, hey, we got a leakage over here on such and such. You know, we should be able to detect that, and I know with this system, we are.
Now, with the me, with the, the meters, you're correct. It will detect leaks within the house.
Yeah, but no one's letting people know usually. And also, the RAP program would come in to say, hey, you got a leak here, you know, we need to, you know, get your toilet replaced, or we need to do these certain things to help homeowners to be efficient. This, right here, and you're asking, is this out of the, my time is going to be up, and I'm going to finish reading while. reading while.
In fairness, the Metron system, it also detects.
That's my time. I'm sorry, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? Any other discussion in the first round? Any discussion in the sec, oh, you want, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, I'm, I'm looking at this app. So.
I didn't even know there was one.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, um, it's called Eye on, Eye on Water or something like that. Um, Madam Chair, through you to, um, Mr.?
Hudson.
Hudson, Hudson and, and, and Jiggy. So, wait a minute. Are you saying that the meters that you just installed in all of the residents' homes, they are not working accurately?
I wouldn't say all of them. I'd say a number of them are failing. We're regularly changing the Badgers out. And we need more Metrons to change the Badgers out.
We just got, we just got them. When did we get those meters?
Quite an information. I got mine installed during COVID.
Yeah, I did too. I mean.
And we're sending the Badger meters back to Badger. And they're not telling us what the problem is. They're just sending them back and say they're fine. But we're finding the batteries are dying and they're supposed to be like a 25-year battery.
So do we have a warranty? We gotta have a warranty or something. Something, I mean, I, I agree with Councilman Pfeiffer. This doesn't make sense that we're getting ready to spend out more money to replace the meters, but we haven't done everything that we need to do to, um, make them accountable.
Yes, ma'am. I, I understand what you're saying completely. And I will look into the, the warranty on that. I don't believe it's a 10-year warranty with that system, but I will look it up and I'll, I can get back with you and, and let you know as long as, as well as.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking at my app right now. It doesn't, mine says no leaks detected. Um, it's telling me that my usage, my usage probably went up a little bit, um, this last week or so. Um, but your usage is up. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know if this is not working. Um, but I, I would say, I'm not gonna support this tonight because I would say we need to look into some other things and maybe get with the legal department and see what we can do to, to make, um, Badger, um, accountable. Thank you.
Any other, any other discussion in the first round?
Madam Chair? So I'll tell you what, I'm gonna make an amended motion to give you an opportunity for y'all to figure this out by Monday. And I guess if we don't have it figured out by Monday, we'll be right back in this committee. Madam Chair, I'd like to make an amended motion to send this to special affairs.
There's a motion on the floor by the councilwoman in the seventh ward to send resolution two five zero three eight eight to special affairs, supported by the councilman in the first ward. This is the vote to send special affairs.
Thank you.
Dr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. McShat?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Alamin?
Yes.
The vote is nine yes, zero no?
The vote is nine yes, zero no. The next, um, mo, uh, the next one is two five zero three eight nine, grant extension, budget amendment, um, 2022, BGAA, fiscal year 2020, 22, Office of Justice Programs, Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Incentive through September 30th, 2026. Oh, my gosh, that was a tongue twister. I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to send this to council.
The couns, uh, the, so motion on the floor from the councilwoman, the seventh ward, to send two five zero three eight nine to council. And it's been supported by the councilman in the first ward. Is there any discussion?
No, you go first. We apply.
Um, recent shutdown, it's been a little pushback. So I'm, so I'm pretty sure probably about another, I'm pretty sure probably about another two to three, two to three weeks at least.
Another two to the, three, another two to the, three weeks before, three weeks before we hear. Uh, what amount are we here? Uh, what amount we apply for?
Two million.
We applied for 2 million?
Yes.
Uh, and so, uh, when that, when that comes before, because obviously this had a timeline on it, when that comes before us, are we gonna do something different than a timeline, just so you don't have to come back for an extension? Or how will that be different?
So for the new grant opportunity, it'll be four years. So this one was 36 months. The new one will be 48 months. And that's beca, and that's because the DOJ, they had time to like reevaluate the program and they realized like three years is not efficient to, um, implement this program.
And so what's the amount again that you said is left?
Um, about 748.
748. And are, is there a plan for the remaining dollars?
Yeah. So, uh, majority of it, um, 450,000 will be allocated to the, um, organizations that's doing community violence intervention work. And then the rest will be staffing.
Seamus?
So, yeah, so, so last year before the, um, the new administration and, and main administration came in, um, we had put out.
Whereas the CVIPI seeks implement evidence and form strategies to reduce and prevent violent crime in the city of Flint, including efforts, efforts to address gang violence, gun violence based on partnership with community residents, local government agencies, victim service providers, community-based organizations, law enforcement, hospitals, researchers, and other community stakeholders. So what have we done with gang violence? We have a gun, a gang violence problem. Last year, 10 children were shot, six fatal in the city of Flint. Why are we holding on to this money? And who's being, who's departments being? And who's, who are the people being paid out of this money?
So when you say who's being paid, are you speaking to positions?
The, listen, see, don't really, see, I, y'all don't hear them, but they got a, a list of people. What departments are being paid out of it?
So we have a whole CVIPI department, which is Community Violence Intervention and Prevention. So we have our program director, I'm the program director. And then we have our community liaison. We have our finance coordinator. And we have our chief resilience officer. That's also being.
So who are those people? I didn't know we had this.
So I'm the program director.
You're the, okay, and who's under, I thought you were business?
No.